Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's hearing for the Town of Hingham for Thursday, March 20. We have a small agenda, but we have some activities we have to do in preparation for town meeting. The agenda for this evening will approve some minutes. We'll review an agreement, propose to sign it with the Library Staff Association. The Police Department and the Traffic Committee will share with us Beale Street parking regulations, which we have discussed in the public before. We'll have Selectmen Town Administrators' reports. We will open the warrant for the annual town meeting. And the warrant closes, I believe, today?
Yes.
Is it today? Yeah, today's the day. So this is the last chance for changes. And then we'll adjourn to an executive session to consider a complaint brought by a public employee on a personnel issue. So with that, have my colleagues had a chance to review the minutes?
Yep, I'm fine.
I have only one minor. It's on page, let's see, two of the March 6, 2014. It reads, Mr. Clinton, I think it should say, Mr. Clifton.
Oh, okay.
Cliff.
It's just a minor.
Where was that on?
Going up from the bottom.
Third.
It's like the fourth paragraph off of the bottom.
Fourth paragraph from the bottom. It says, "Clinton." It's Clifton. Okay, thank you for that.
I did mark them, yes.
With that amendment, I'll entertain a motion.
We'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 27, 2014, and March 6, 2014.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is a memorandum of agreement between the Town of Hingham and the Hingham Library Staff Association, members of the Service Employees International Union of the AFL-CIO. Ted, do you have any comments? I have some, if you don't.
I can just give you a brief summary of it, but if you've...
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Essentially, this is a mid-contract agreement, and it addresses the inclusion of several new positions, primarily some new managerial positions, assistant library director-type position to create better transition in the future, and also to address some of the technology issues that they have.
Okay. Last night's, and I'll jump ahead, the library trustees' meeting, they discussed the two new positions, which strengthen the staff in some technology areas and technical areas. So it was unanimously approved by the trustees, and I would support and urge my colleagues to agree to the proposed agreement. Any questions or comments?
No, I've been following this at the library, and I think it's really excellent.
It is. I think, you know, having that, and to recognize that the two positions is helpful for them. And just as an aside, we met last night, there's a new assistant director at the library, and that's Linda Harper, who was a very talented person, and so that was her first baptism by fire last night. So that's a good thing. Okay, can I have a motion on the agreement?
Go ahead.
I'll move that we sign the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Hingham, Massachusetts, and the Hingham Library Staff Association, Local 888, SEIU, AFL-CIO.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next item is Beale Street parking regulations, a proposal from the Traffic Committee, and I see the Deputy Chief Olson is here, so...
Good evening.
If you'd like to sit, if that makes it easier for you.
On January 29, a request was made by Tom Hoffman of the Hingham Sports Partnership. He requested that no parking signs be installed on Beale Street due to parking issues at Lynch Field. That area of the street is narrow, near the islands on Beale Street, and cars are currently parking on William B. Terry Drive side of the street, which is causing some problems. During the heavy times during the summer, there's sometimes three games going on there. The issue is that there's a drop-off area in front of, on Beale Street, and the cars were parking in that area, so when kids were getting in and out, it was causing difficulty, so we had children moving in between parked cars, and also anyone coming out of the areas on Beale Cove Village, and also the Back River Road. When they looked to the left, their vision was blocked by the parked cars, so it was a concern of worried about accidents and stuff. The Traffic Committee took it up. Sergeant Durth stated that the best options would be for no parking signs to be installed on the west side of Beale Street from William B. Terry Drive at the entrance of Lynch Field parking lot, and continue to the entrance of Beale Cove Village. This would improve traffic flow, safety, and visibility on the street. When the field is in use, the motions were seconded. It was also, the area was also viewed and looked at by Selectmen Healy and Chief Perino went out and actually did a site visit down there to observe the area. So on January 30, Chief Perino sent a letter to the Board of Selectmen recommending that no parking signs be posted on the west side of Beale Street from William B. Terry at the entrance of Lynch Field parking lot, and continuing to the entrance of Beale Cove Complex.
I have no questions on the agreement, but the deputy has to say.
Just a, I'm sorry, Irma?
I agree also, because I've been to games there, and it is a little scary watching the kids dart from between cars on the street.
Yes, it is, yeah. I mean, that's the main area. We always want to have the area as safe as possible, and I think this will really be a big help in that.
I think it's great.
All right. Is there sufficient with the, when you take away one side of the street parking, and I should know this, but will it be able to accommodate the crowds?
Well, the area is sort of set up so that they can park on the Lincoln Street side. There's parking allowed on that side. With the installation of the islands and the whole concept of narrowing down the road to prevent the speeders, there really wasn't accommodations left on the right-hand side of the road next to the parking lot, and that's why the parking lot was put in to accommodate the fields. So it really wasn't, so when people park there, it's very narrow, and it's just sort of a, to be honest with you, there's an accident waiting to happen in those conditions, so we think this will alleviate the issue.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from the public?
I'm sorry, parking issues, so there is sufficient parking without more spaces?
No. Yeah, the question Carol is asking, the press is asking, is there, if you take off and put the no parking on that one side, will there be, still be sufficient parking to accommodate the crowds?
There's probably going to be times where it will still be an overflow, and that can be accomplished, there's, hopefully, people do park in the adjacent buildings that aren't at use, and also on Sergeant William Terry Drive that's wide enough and has access for people to park there, and they can cross at the satellite.
Okay, thanks.
If, we have to be careful about parking on the public buildings, do we not?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Because they're not technically our public?
No, but people unfortunately do park there, I guess, so I'd rather have them park there when the buildings aren't in use, but I understand the complexity of people using other people's property.
Have we talked to the owner of those buildings just to advise them that that potential exists?
Not that I'm aware of, but it'd probably be a good idea to do that. I'll follow up on that.
Okay, that's great. Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to amend the parking rules and regulations of the Town of Hingham, adopted May 31, 1939, as heretofore amended as follows. Article 5, Parking, Standing, Stopping. Section 2, Prohibited on Certain Streets. No parking on the west side of Beale Street, from William B. Terry Drive at the entrance of Lynch Field parking lot, and continuing to the entrance of Beale's Cove Complex.
Second. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Deputy? Always nice to see you.
Oh, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. See you, Glenn. As I mentioned, one of the main reason for meeting tonight was to open the warrant, and as I know, we are all intimately familiar with the proposed article Q-Q, which deals with a memorial to Seaman Herbert L. Foss and potentially others. The article in front of you, which we should discuss, I think, were required because there is a Foss memorial article, and that we need to maintain one, says council. And in addition, you may have heard, there was a meeting last week with an advisory where this was discussed, and some additional questions were raised. So there was a meeting Tuesday morning I had with the advisory liaison, Tom Piles, and with the chairman of the Advisory Committee, Greg McKeon, and we developed a proposal that you have in front of you, which I'll read so the public knows what it says. It says, "Will the town raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds of sum of money for the use of the Foss Memorial Committee in the design and permitting of a memorial to Seaman Herbert L. Foss and/or others to be constructed at a Medal of Honor Memorial Park, or act on anything relating thereto. The design shall be subject to a 25%, 50%, 75%, and final review and approval by the Board of Selectmen." It's obviously for, up to us to either go forward with this or not. The one question that was left in the open was, would it be more appropriate for the design proposal that here in terms of spacing it out, would that be more appropriate to insert that into the comment section, or to change the language of that to something else, to call it periodic, or quarterly, or bimonthly, whatever we collectively think by the Board of Selectmen? The intent with this, to discuss it in detail, will be, and we've been invited to a meeting on, this article will be in the supplement, and we've been invited by the Advisory Committee to join with them for the full discussion on April 3, so that we'll have an opportunity to deal with it completely in one session. The comment will have a number of the concerns that have been raised by various people, the Historic Commission and others, and you all recall seeing the questions that they've asked, and that will be in the comment. And there's some other issues, but that comment is not yet ready for prime time tonight, so I thought, let me just, because we're required to insert the article, that we do that tonight. And then all the discussions on how this would proceed could be, we could research between now and April 3, and then have the meeting on April 3 with the advisory, so that it's ready for the supplement, if it's so agreed to. So that is as much as, I think, as Ted, have you, did I forget anything in this? I think it's fairly...
Other than the current article that you have is not within the four corners of what is legally required to modify, and that's why we're suggesting you put this, council's recommendation, put a new article in, not just try to mold the old article to this.
And the money, the last article said $40,000, and the money would be up to $40,000, was what the comment would suggest. So, and again, but it's not limited, one of the concerns some of the Historic Commission folks had was the construction phase, and they wanted to be involved in how this moved forward, so taking that, that's a suggestion, not a requirement. Taking that into commitment, that's why we said, let's just put up to $40,000 for the design and permitting. So, sure.
General Meyer, Hingham Journal, so I'm just a bit confused, but, so up to $40,000, so are you saying the former article will be dropped, and this is going to be replacing it?
That's correct.
That it will be, the wording could change after the April 3 discussion?
No, the word...
The wording of the article cannot change.
That cannot change.
The recommendation or the comment.
The recommendation could change.
Okay, this will say the same, but then up to $40,000 would always be in the comment period. So this replaces the old one?
Replaces the old one.
Okay, the discussion on the 3rd will be kind of what to put in the comment?
There will be a comment that will be disseminated on that night, and the advisory will then revise, or...
A recommended motion.
So that's about the comment, that meeting?
Correct.
Comment and the recommended motion.
Will they have a recommended motion for our comment at that time?
They will have both a comment and a recommendation, recommended motion, because it'll be, if they're going to have an affirmative motion, which we don't know or not, but if they have an affirmative motion, it'll be their motion, and it'll be their comment, it won't be yours. The warrant is the advisory's. They put forth the motions and the, now, if they don't put forth a positive motion, affirmative motion, then anybody else can put forth an affirmative motion under the article.
So my suggestion would be, since there's been so much discussion about this, that, you know, that's why I asked Betty to give it to you yesterday, digest it, make any suggestions or comments that you want to make sure, or make any wordings that you want to make sure are in the comment or in the recommended motion. If we could get that to Ted, and I'll make sure that that gets into the liaison hand on advisory.
Do you want any of that now?
Sure, sure.
Can somebody talk a little bit about Medal of Honor Memorial Park? Yesterday, when Betty handed this to me, it's the first time I've heard or heard anything about that.
Sure. I think, and I don't think I know, that, as you know, there have been a number of discussions, I was here a couple of weeks ago, that there may potentially be other Medal of Honor winners in the Town of Hingham. The thought that some of the advisory committee shared with Greg, and then he with me, was that, why don't we have a Medal of Honor, an area designated on the waterfront as a Medal of Honor Park? That would then permit the addition of other recipients of that medal, if they are so identified, to be recognized at that location, if it's so decided in the future. But the primary purpose would be, the park would be there, and the first person to be honored on the park would be Seaman Herbert Foss. And the comment, to, I think, or I'm, I'll anticipate your question, I think the comment would then ask the Herbert Foss Memorial Committee to go back and identify, what are the conditions under which somebody would be recognized? As we know, General Blackmer was not an official resident of the Town of Hingham, but he's recognized in our G.A.R. Hall. That's somebody that maybe people might want to recognize. There are three other recipients whose name John Clifton put forth to us, and I would not prejudge that recommendation. It's whether or not they should or should not be recognized would be decided by that committee, once some conditions would be developed, and once those conditions are identified, they would come back to this board to say, these are the recommendations we think that would cause somebody to be honored. So it gives us a proactive role in this, allows the committee's work to go forward, and since there's been so much discussion over this, it permits an ongoing dialogue, which would help, I hopefully, get the object of getting that recognition. So I think, I think, is there anything else? I'm trying to remember the...
I have one other.
Sure, go ahead.
My other comment, as I said last week, and I think when we've discussed this in the past, I don't think it's appropriate for the "design shall be subject to," and so forth. This isn't building a road, and I know Mr. Healy put this in, but I interpret this as a distrust of the committee. They're due to give us periodic reports. We do not put this burden on any other committee. And there's enough people on there now that should something be going astray, I'm sure one of us would be told about it.
I think, and Paul, if I may, just I'm hearing from Ted, so I'll certainly give you the floor. I think the intent was to have some formalized process. Whether this is the formalized process, or is there some other language that would accomplish that, I leave that up to us to decide, but I think that was, am I, did I hear right?
Correct, but this is the time to decide it, because if this goes in, then that's the article.
That's the article. If we wanted to do something that said a bimonthly review, or a quarterly review, or something like that...
Quarterly review would be much less onerous, to me.
Okay, I don't know.
It's difficult to really comment to your remarks, Ms. Lawter, because I'm not exactly sure what the design that's coming forth from this committee will be. I don't know what kind of permitting issues it triggers. So I think that if we are involved at an early stage, we'll have a much better sense, so that the follow-on reviews, it's not an issue of distrust, it's just simply a mechanism to stay involved in the design, in the scope of the project. I mean, it could potentially involve multi-layered permitting, as I've said previously, and I just think prudence and common sense dictates that we don't, you know, get caught up and be presented with something that's, here it is, what do you think? We have the opportunity and the ability to measure it and be a participant in the design.
So if I think, let me just, I think the intent was, like, as when Roger Fernandez was in here on the Derby Street corridor, he came back to us, you know, he gave us a big map, we then sat down, and we all gave him suggestions, and then he came back again. His technique is what the planning board uses, but I think, Paul, what you're, if I'm hearing what Irma's saying and what you're saying, is there other language that would accomplish that same objective?
You're going to have to go through the permitting boards anyway, correct?
As far as I know.
So I don't think we're a permitting board.
No, but I think what you would like to see is that we have input on the, before it doesn't get away from us.
That's exactly right.
And I think periodic reviews or quarterly reviews, but this looks like we're building a road.
Yeah, okay. Well, I don't think we're building a road, but I don't know what the design is going to be. I don't know what kind of design triggers there are going to be with respect to the permitting, to the infrastructure down there. I honestly don't know.
I had a chance to speak with the architect involved, and this actually is a fairly standard process, 25, 50, 75, 100% design reviews, not just planning and roads. It's pretty much a, an industry practice for how to build a project in the public eye, so that the public has this opportunity, along with the board, at your televised meetings at each of these steps, to say, yes, we like this, yes, we don't like this, and how, and then it gives the committee an opportunity to make adjustments, so that when they get to the 100% design, by that time, everybody's on board, everybody's had a chance to see it as it's grown organically. So, you know, it is a pretty common process. I think if you were to move away from anything specific, given the nature of how this project has moved on, you might not have the input that you want. Each of three of you have expressed different levels of input that you wanted different times to me.
So, I mean, I had a discussion with the current chairman of the Foss Memorial Committee, and he expressed some of the same reservations about, but I said to him, I think the intent was, because of these issues that have arisen in the last six months, that this was an effort to bring an organized approach to it. And it's not, and it's, you know, I don't, will it be not a 25%, but a 28%? I think the intent is...
This is a very common phrase with architects. They understand how to do, how to get these to the stages. That's the deal with their clients.
Yep. So that's what I explained, and he was concerned about, I think you're rightfully reflecting that, Irma, he was concerned about the restrictive nature, but I assured him the idea was, we've got to have more frequent dialogue on this because of what's happened in the last few months, so that was the purpose for putting it in. Tom Piles, who drafted the article, he said another proposal could be, he asked me in the email he sent me, we could take that sentence out and put it in the comment, and that would accomplish the same thing, since we frequently refer to comments...
Yep.
...in order to guide us, and that might be...
I'm satisfied with that.
That could be another way to do it, because...
And that would be very acceptable, too, because, again, this committee reports to the Board of Selectmen. The Foss Committee is created and reports to the Board of Selectmen, you have the ability to put whatever controls you want on there.
And his thought, he left it there because it was in the last draft we sent, but he said, we could move it to the comment, and that would have the, as you all know, and after six years, I know, I always look at the warrant article, and then I run to the comment, because...
I just go to the recommended motion, read that, and then read the comments.
Yeah, so it is a way, because that it guides, it offers guide, the same amount of, it has the same merit of force, I think I'm saying that right. You can't exceed that force of the comment, so that's another alternative to dealing with it.
I'm going to cite Harry Drewman. The buck stops here on this project, and if this goes bad, nobody's going to look at the Foss Committee, they're going to look at the Selectmen. So, I mean, if you want to put the stages of design review in another location, and it's incorporated by reference, that, to me, is not problematic, but I definitely want to have language in there that the final review and approval by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, that would be...
Without qualification.
Well, we'd have to approve it anyway, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's better if it's explicit.
Let's, let me think. So if we...
If it was going to go into the comment, Mr. Chairman, then you would just end the motion after thereto, comma, or question mark.
That's, that's...
If it's not, then leave it as it is.
Yeah. I mean, it has the same effect.
It certainly does, without a doubt. I mean, although it doesn't, let me just be clear, it doesn't have the legal effect. Legally, the Board of Selectmen can do what they want, but I've worked here 20 years, I've never seen any board in town move against the comment as voted by town meeting under an article, so, you know, I think practically speaking, you're bound by the comment.
Yeah, that's been my experience.
Yes, yes.
But I think...
My comfort level would be heightened if we had that explicitly contained.
In the, in the comment?
Right in here, that the final design in review.
Why don't we say this, why don't we take the 25, 50, 75 out, and just put, "Design shall be subject to..."
Final review by the Selectmen.
Shall be subject to final review by the Selectmen, and then put this sentence in the comment. Does that, does that...
I can deliver that.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that's good.
Excellent.
We got someplace, okay. So do you have that, Sharon? So, "The design shall be subject to final review and approval by the Board of Selectmen," and that the phrase that's in there now should be placed into the comment. Okay? Good. Okay, so I think, I think we need to open the warrant to insert the revised article Q-Q. So, Mr. Healy, would you?
Sure. I move that we vote to reopen the warrant and insert the following under article Q-Q, to remove the present language and insert the following. "Will the town raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds a sum of money for the use of the Foss Memorial Committee in the design and permitting of a memorial to Seaman Herbert L. Foss and/or others to be constructed at a Medal of Honor Memorial Park, or act on anything related thereto. Design shall be subject to a final review and approval by the Board of Selectmen."
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good. Okay. Okay.
Was your vote also favorable action on the article, or just to include it? Do you want to take a vote on it to let the advisory know your position?
I thought they were meeting in joint session.
We're going to meet in joint session.
Okay.
This is just to put it in.
All right.
Am I, I mean, I, given the way this has gone, I'm not sure what questions will come from which part of Ebbets Field, so let's, I think we'll wait to hear those comments anyway, if that's agreeable to my colleagues.
Fine.
Okay. We have an appointment? Let's see, was it Irma?
Me. I'd make a motion to appoint Diane Morrison to the Beautification Commission for a three-year term expiring in 2017.
Second that.
Any further discussion, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mr. Alexiades, any... Mr. Alexiades, any reports or, oh, okay, Ms. Lauter?
Well, I got a couple things. There's still a few memberships left at the South Shore Country Club, so very few, so if you're interested in playing golf under a membership, go up to the web and sign up. And a reminder that Kite Day at the country club is March 29th, Sunday, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And this was passed to me this afternoon, and we need to recognize Keith German again. Keith spoke at, this morning, at the Plymouth County Assessors Meeting about the Valor Act. And that's the Veterans Work Off Program. We're one of very few towns that have implemented this. And Keith, I am told through Nick, Rick Nowlan, that he did a fantastic job providing all of the information about how do you set up a program, how do you get it approved, and how do you administer it. So another star for Keith German. I don't know what we'd do without him. One last thing, the kickoff for the South Shore Special Needs Athletic Partnership was this past Tuesday at the middle school at 7:00. We had a wonderful turnout. It's going to be a lot of community support for that. The guest speaker was Debbie Arenberg from U.S. Rowing. She is the authority on adaptive rowing programs. This will be up on H-Cam, and we're working to get the film that she had as well as her PowerPoint presentation. Absolutely fascinating for people that are interested, and it really is, these are amazing athletes, but the boats that they have and the things that they have now to allow people to enjoy the sport and participate in it competitively is amazing. First program will be here in April, and thanks to Doug McCaig, our Citizen of the Year, and the Hingham High School Rowing Association, there'll be an adaptive rowing program, and it's in April, so keep watching for that. And it's geared towards high school age and kind of upper middle school for this very first program. So stay tuned, but a great kickoff, wonderful community support. That's all we got.
Great. And I'll echo Irma's, congratulations to Doug, that was a nice recognition. Mr. Healy?
I'd like to send out a note of congratulation to Garrett Bradley. Mass Bar Association recognized him as the legislator of the year. That's a rather impressive organization, recognizing an equally impressive man. We're happy and thankful that he's our representative. Following up with what Irma Lauter said, I'd just like to echo an appreciation to Mr. David Sargent for his work with the Valor Act here locally as well. I think the success of Keith German is measured by the support that he enjoys within the community. Last Tuesday night, South Shore or South Hingham Working Group met, we discussed the roadway Derby Street Corridor, the bridge. I once again welcome that the residents, the meetings have been actively attended. The conversation's respectful, the free flow of ideas is very stimulating. So if you get a chance, show up. The next one's going to be on sewer and water issues. Finally, I'm stepping out of my comfort zone a little bit. The Hingham High Girls Track Team recently set a school record in the Nationals. Two of my nieces, Olivia Candari and Sarah Endike, were on that team, along with Sierra Irwin and Kate Frida. Very well done, ladies. And Andrew Bowles, who is the first Hingham High to be an All-American in two sports. And additionally, there's a young woman up at the Notre Dame Academy that has some rather impressive finishes, so nice work, ladies and gentlemen.
That's good stuff.
It'd be tough to catch.
Yeah, that's terrific. That's great, and congratulations to them all. Mr., I'm going to turn to my town administrator in a moment. Those of you who have been driving around town know that, not just here, but throughout the New England area, roads are in, dire would not be the correct word. Oh, am I allowed to say what happened to you?
Sure.
The administrator drove, was on one-
Uh-oh. Fort Hill Street.
Fort Hill Street, because I came in to see him, and I said, what's going on on Fort Hill Street? We did approve, as you may recall, that opening for gas mains, but the weather has not cooperated, and the ability to get the tar back the way, the blacktop back the way we would all like it to be is somewhat problematic, given the cold, coldness of the weather. And in addition, the ability to, the ability to repair those potholes, which, I know there's a couple that were trying to eat me alive when I drove by, but I guess the one thing I, in the end, what we should be doing is just paying attention and driving slowly or to avoid those issues. Roger will be in to talk to us about the road plan April 10th, I think it is.
I think we've tentatively scheduled him for April 10th.
April 10th. So we're hopeful that at some point, this, every time we think the snow is going to stop, it doesn't, and that means that every time I think I'm going to put my skis away, I don't. So the winter remains with us, even though today's the first, today is-
Is his draft plan up on the internet yet, or is it?
I think it is, actually. I think I saw the list of the streets that they have.
Yeah, is that the list of streets are, but I think he'll come in and give us that overview-
Okay.
-in case there are other, other changes that we want to make.
They're not done in the order they appear.
No, no, that's right, they are not. What happens, as you all may know, is that there is a collaborative effort with the other utilities to make sure that if they have something that's coming, we try to arrange with that so that we don't disrupt the neighborhoods too many times.
His draft plan has addressed several of the roads that are in more worstest shape, which is terrible English, but the Martins Lane folks, I think, will be very happy if that stays, because there, there are some craters, not potholes.
Right, well said. It has not been a good year. Next Wednesday afternoon, the town administrator and I are going to meet with the Department of Environmental Protection on the water issues, and I know many of you attended a meeting last week to hear about the situation of our water supply. We've got some feedback from that, which we'll take with us, but we'll talk about this, and we're also going to talk about the issues dealing with Aquarian and other such subjects. So we'll report back to you at some subsequent date when that happens.
The 26th? The Selectmen, the D E P.
Just me, no, just me and the D E P.
I'm sorry, about what issues?
It's about, it's about the water issues, water supply issues. They control our water supply, no matter who owns the company. Right. So it's good that we get input from them, make sure we're on the same page. Okay, any other issues? Okay, I'd like to recommend to the board that we go into executive section, pursue into Section 21A1, for the board to consider a complaint brought by a public employee on a personnel issue because discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town. The board will not resume open session this evening. Second, Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Healy, aye, Mr. Abuffel, aye, and Ms. Lauter, aye. Okay, thank you, we'll see you soon again.